Good afternoon, everyone. It is Tuesday, January 26, 2016. This is a Fairmont Area School Board meeting. Our roll call this evening is all members of our school board are present. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance and continue with our meeting, I'd just like to take a moment of silence here for one of our longtime teachers, Mr. Dennis Murphy, passed away this morning. So, we'd like to extend our sympathies to our family, friends, and the former students of Mr. Murphy. He taught in Fairmont for forty-five years. He taught eighth grade English. And so, we did a little estimate, and he touched over sixty-five thousand students in his career of teaching. And also, it was posted on Facebook this morning, and it's already had over twelve thousand hits to that. So, he was a much-belowed member of our faculty. So, let's just remember him with a moment of silence. Thank you. Now, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, if you look, you should have minutes from our last meeting in your packet, since everyone had a chance to review those.
I have it. I'd make a motion to accept the minutes as offered.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I have a motion by Dan, a second by Nicole, to approve the January 12, 2016, school board meeting minutes as presented, or as printed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Then, you should have a green agenda in front of you this evening. Couple of changes on there. There was, we added a donation, so it should be Appendix A through D. And then, also, under Personnel, there's an additional employment to deal with this evening. Anything else that needs to come for the agenda? Any adjustments, changes, corrections?
I move to approve the January 26, 2016, school board meeting agenda as amended and now presented.
Thank you, Nicole. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So, I have a motion by Nicole, a second by Julie, to approve the January 26, 2016, school board meeting agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. Well, we have a couple of celebrations and school community reports to celebrate tonight. And this, today, we have Matt Mahoney to talk about the AAA Award winners, and he'll introduce them and tell us a little about that. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Kind of an honor here to be able to talk to you guys about the AAA Award winners. It really is kind of the most prestigious award that any high school student could receive. The AAA goes back, it was established in nineteen eighty-eight. The Academics, the Arts, and Athletics Awards is sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League. The award goes to high school seniors who have a B or better grade point average and who participates in a league-sponsored athletic and fine art activities. What we typically do in the first part of December, we actually have a AAA Committee that is made up of myself, our guidance counselors Jenny Schwiger, Scott Girdes, and then I have two teachers as well, Kate Collin-Bach and Jeff Nauman. And we sit together, and we look at all the names. We get the grade point averages, we get all their lists of all their activities that they're in, and we just, we kind of go here, 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 and we kind of narrow it down. And this year, we selected Anaga Kamaragari and Tyler Tennyson. Both of them, they're, I'm gonna let these guys come up here and speak in a second, but they're, the things that they've done in high school is just, it's amazing. You know, when they walk off the stage in June, they're gonna look back and say, wow, I don't think I really left anything else to do here. And it is an honor to have these guys come up and represent our school as our AAA Award winners. So, here's Anaga Kamaragari and Tyler Tennyson.
Hi. My name is Anaga Kamaragari. I'm obviously a senior at Fairmont High School. And I guess I don't really have a favorite teacher or a favorite class that I can talk about, but something that has been really important to me, I think during my high school education, is my participation in music. And so, I think walking down to the music classrooms every day, every morning, and playing in the orchestra and the band has been really important. So, that's something about me.
So, can you tell us, like, what activities you've been involved in over, like, what is it, through nine through twelve there, Matt? Is that how you kind of, what you go through?
Yeah. So, I have been involved in band and orchestra. Math League and Knowledge Bowl are my academic activities, and speech is one of my main extracurriculars, I would say. And I'm also on the tennis team. So, those are my main activities.
And so, how did you do in speech?
Um, pretty well, so far.
Pretty well, right.
Yeah. I have made it to the state tournament since eighth grade, and I'm in two events, informative speaking and original oratory. So...
You've done very well in that. And then, you've also been to the national speech.
I have, yeah. So, I attended the national tournament in Dallas this last summer, and that was quite the experience.
I bet that was. So, in band and choir, or band and orchestra, what do you, what instruments do you play?
I play the French horn in concert band and the trumpet in, like, pep bands and jazz bands. And I play the violin in orchestra.
And so, do you have time to practice all three of those?
Sometimes. I try to find time, but...
Because to get better, you really have to practice that, don't you? Yeah, especially violin. I'm well aware of that one. So, anything else that you'd like to share? Oh, what are your plans for after high school here?
Um, I'm definitely gonna be attending college. I'm not sure quite where yet or exactly what I'll end up doing, but I'm interested in pursuing a career in neuroscience and journalism or cognitive science, depending on the place and what it offers. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's coming up pretty soon to have that decision made, isn't it?
Yep.
Yeah, coming up in February here, isn't it? Yeah. So, you have several choices to pick from, I'm assuming.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay, good for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And congratulations on your AAA. And then, Tyler? Tell us a little bit about your activities, what you're involved in, in, at school.
Academic activities would just be math league. Extracurricular activities would be baseball, basketball, and football. And I also do just band and orchestra for that.
What do you play in band?
I play percussion. So, pep band would be like the quads or the quints, whatever you want to call that. And concert band is just an array of all the percussion instruments that we have. So, like, this concert snare, concert bass drum, xylophone, bells, suspended cymbal. I mean, there's a ton of them.
Do you go on the marching band trip, too?
Uh, yeah, I went to the last one on the West Coast.
That's very fun, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, that was a neat experience.
Yeah. So, what's your favorite sport? You participate in several. Which one is your favorite?
I've kind of grown to love baseball the most.
Football? He's standing there.
I know.
So, if I asked you who your favorite coach is, you'd have to say Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, I'd say Mahoney.
Mahoney, okay. All right. And so, what are your plans after high school here?
Uh, my plans are to go to college at Buena Vista University and major in athletic training.
As a part of three sports, I suppose that is pretty interesting, too, yeah.
And also play baseball down there as well.
Yeah. Do you have a favorite memory of Fairmont High School?
If, I really can't think of one off the top of my head. I mean, there's state basketball sophomore year, and I just got to go up as, like, an extra member. And four of my friends, we got to stay in a hotel room, and that was probably one of, like, the highlights of my career and getting this award, because my parents told me it's a pretty big deal. And just, I don't know, making friend, friendships that I'll have for my life, yeah.
Yeah, AAA is a really big deal, and we are very proud of you. And now, you move on to competition, right, Matt? I don't know exactly what happens. You want to tell what they do next?
Yep.
Or do you know?
Yep.
What, Anaga? And Tyler, do you know what happens next?
Yep. So, now it goes into, their names go into the, into the section, Region 2A section. And then, there's four subsections, and there's about four or five schools in each subsection. And we have to send it to a principal, and then there is a small committee that will pick a boy winner and a girl winner from each section. So, and then they'll, excuse me, each subsection, and then they'll go to the section. And then, I believe it's at the halftime of the boys' state championship game, they have all of the section winners, boys and girls, come up and be there at the halftime of the, of the boys' basketball game. So, Emily Kim did it last year, actually went up, and it was, it was a really neat deal. And they have a meal program. And then, they literally walk you right across the street into the Target Center, and they go shoulder to shoulder almost the whole length of the basketball court and recognize these kids. So, it's a really neat deal, and we'll see where these guys go.
Do they, so do they have to do interviews and things, or how does it work? Is it just through the application?
Yep. So, so they, I met with them right before Christmas break, and I told them they had to fill out this packet. There's probably about six or seven pages there. They have to have a teacher write a letter of recommendation, and they give me that packet right when they come back from Christmas break. And then, I send it off to the section chair, and, and they look at it, review it. And if you are selected as your subsection, then there is an interview to be the section winner. Yep?
Well, on behalf of this school, I have certificates for both of you. So, Anaga, congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job. And Tyler, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Photo. Hey, Matt, bring them forward.
Keep going.
So, watch for the photo in the paper. It'll be in the paper. So, yeah, congratulations to both of you and to your families, too, for all the support they give you, and all the teachers at school, all the support, and all your fellow classmates, and everybody at school. We're very proud of you. Thank you. All right, next up is Caitlin Martins with the elementary school newspaper, and she brought a special guest, and I'll let her introduce him. Whoops.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Martins, and I'm the library media specialist at the elementary school. And I brought Ethan Girdes with me, that he's gonna pass out the last three issues of the newspaper to the six board members. But we started the Fledgling this year, which is our elementary school newspaper. And it's called the Fledgling because we are elementary birds, as the cardinal. And every month, we come out with a new paper. It's printed in black and white, but it's available for anybody online in color as well on the library's webpage. So, you can always find it there. But a few of the highlights are, there's about twenty students who regularly contribute something to the paper. They don't always get in each month's issue because they don't edit their things fully to make it into the paper, but eventually, it does get there. But they work on things on a weekly basis. And you'll see on the January one that every month has a staff spotlight of meet, let's meet Mrs. Heinrich on this one. And they're allowed to interview anyone who's not a classroom teacher. So, it's to highlight all the other people in the school that they're not seeing every day, all day. And so, we've done people from the lunchroom staff to the fayed teachers, all kinds of different staff in the school that the students want to interview. And then, on the bottom of this January one on the cover, you'll see an article by Lenny Tweaton, and he's the local historian. And so, we, in order to get a primary source in every paper, he contributes something to the Fledgling as well. And then, in most every issues, every issue, issue, like on the back of this one, there's something in cursive, so kids have to read cursive. But other than that, there's different things each month. We just use an iPad to take all the photos because it's easier, and then loading everything from different devices. And it just kind of depends on the month. This month has a lot about hockey in winter because it's January, but other months have had some other things. There's a whole page spread on celebrating Martin Luther King Day in here. But there's always one page devoted to what's happening at the library, because I'm the editor. But other than that, it's, it just depends on the month. So, I'll let Ethan answer any questions unless you have questions for me.
Well, I don't know who can answer, but is, so how do you get a copy of it? Is on the website?
Um, it, we started out, like, so in September and October, every kid got one so that they would know it exists, because it hasn't happened in the past. And then, from, since October, teachers can request a class set of them. Otherwise, they're available in the library for kids to pick up, since they come to the library every week, every week anyway. If they want one, it's there for them.
Okay. So, Ethan, how are you involved in the school newspaper?
I'm an illustrator.
You're an illustrator. What did you, what did you draw in this one?
Um...
Is there a picture? Oh, there's a...
I did the hockey one with the goal.
Oh, okay, cool. I see that in there. And so, how do you come up with ideas? You just, you just draw whatever?
I think of stuff and that kind of thing.
So, is art one of your favorite drawings, something that you like to do? So, you do it on a regular basis, then?
Yep.
Yeah, very cool. Yeah, yeah.
Um, there are some different jobs, like, writing, illustrating, um, interviewing, and all that different stuff.
So, how'd you get interested in being on the Fledgling paper?
I just like to make people laugh and that kind of thing.
So, Mrs., so Ms. Martins, and she said, if anyone wants to work on the paper, just come and see me, and you just decided that's what you were gonna do?
Um, she, we had to fill out an application about, like, what we would like to do, and draw, and, like, if you wanted to be an interviewer or illustrator.
Oh, okay. And what grade are you in?
Fourth.
You're in fourth grade. Wow, that's pretty good for a fourth grade, to be an editor and contributor to a paper. Very cool. Yeah. Anything else you'd like to tell us, Ethan, about the paper?
Mm-mm.
Who's your classroom teacher?
Mrs. Hous.
Mrs. Hous, okay, very good.
Yeah. And I will, I'll comment of the, so there was applications in September for them to be, like, journalists, writers, or illustrators, photographers. And there were about forty-five students who filled them out. And of those, the people that followed the directions and did everything fully and seemed like they would be able to be responsible enough to come every week, there were twenty chosen. And just, it's only me doing it. So, it was going to be hard to meet with fifty different students on a weekly basis. So, we had to narrow it down a little bit. But hopefully, it'll keep continuing, because right now, we have, this January issue, there were five hundred fifty copies requested by teachers. And then, there's always an extra hundred available, and then I'll print more if needed in the library. So, we circulate between five fifty and seven hundred generally since October.
So, I didn't catch it. Do you meet, like, once after school or during school, or does it?
We meet during school.
Okay.
So, they miss something, and so they have to make up whatever they missed. But it depends on the student. I have some students that meet on Mondays, some Fridays, and some Tuesday, Wednesdays.
Okay. So, it's just kind of a scattered thing?
Yes. So, they don't necessarily know everyone else that's in the paper, because they're not all meeting together.
Oh, you don't meet all together?
No.
Okay. Very cool. Well, thanks for bringing that. Anybody else have any questions for Ethan or Ms. Martins?
It's very fun. You can check out our issues. It usually is out by the second to the last week of the month. That's usually when we get them done by, but it's...
Well, we have January, so that's pretty good. It's still January.
I know. They always come out during the month that it is. It's always out by the end of the month, but hopefully, by mid-month, so...
And then, will you have a photo app over here, too, with Ethan? Just kind of scoot over there, and Mrs. Kapiski will take your picture, and you can hold up your Fledgling little newspaper, too. There you go. Very good. Thank you for coming and sharing, and thank you, Ethan, for coming, too. All right, next on the agenda, Superintendent's report and calendar. Superintendent Brown?
Thank you, Diane. First of all, school calendar, just a couple of things coming up. On Monday, February eighth, we'll have the Staff Development Curriculum Committee that will be meeting. And there is a subcommittee of this group that is meeting to start designing the school calendar for the next two years. I know this calendar committee has met last week already, and they'll have future meetings. And then, on Thursday, February eleventh, there is a Community Ed Advisory Council meeting that will be meeting at twelve o'clock noon. The, I have an enrollment report for the board tonight, and right now, we are serving one thousand seven hundred and one students, eight hundred and three students at the high school, and eight hundred ninety-eight at the elementary. We've had a few increases since the last couple of weeks. And when we compare this to last year at this time, on January twenty-sixth of last year, we had one thousand six hundred ninety-two, and this year, we have one thousand seven hundred and one. So, we're up about nine students from where we were a year ago, and we look like we're gonna finish the year strong. Just a reminder, too, that the end of the semester is Thursday for the students and Friday for the faculty. And, and this is, this is that time of year that we do have some movement at the high school, of some students coming in or leaving the high school because of the semester break. And then, speaking of February coming around the corner, we talked earlier at the board level about the Quaglia survey, and we are going to be administering that to parents during the first two weeks of September. There will be an email and...
February?
February, you mean?
I'm sorry.
Not September?
What did I say?
September.
February, yes. Thank you. February. So, next Monday, actually, on Friday night, we'll be sending out emails to all parents with a letter and showing them what link to go to. And we'll be, we'll have this link open for two weeks, and so, parents can go online, and they can fill out the survey. It takes about fifteen minutes to do the online survey. And then, throughout the month of February, we will also be doing a survey for students in grades three through six, a survey for all students in seven through twelve, and a survey for all staff. And it takes, as soon as all the surveys are completely done in February, it takes about two weeks for the Quaglia Institute to return back to us a comprehensive report. And I'm really looking forward to that. I think it's gonna be great for the community and our staff and our students to share what they feel about our school district. And I think as administrators and board members and faculty and staff and community members, we are gonna learn a lot. And so, when we get that report back, that'd probably be a good time to have a town meeting to really review those results so that we can do some strategic planning for the rest of this school year and next. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Superintendent Brown? All right, then, we'll move to financial business, and we have some donations, Dan.
We're fortunate enough to have four different donations here, so we'll begin in Appendix A. I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas Handcore Incorporated donated forty feet of eight-inch corrugated drainage tile to be used in the greenhouse, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole seconding it. Any further discussion? We voice vote. So, Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank Handcore for their donation. Next one?
Appendix B, I would introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas the harvesting of beans planted by WFS on school district property yielded a donation of three thousand nine hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, whereas Myron Muller donated his time to harvest the beans, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept these gifts.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So, I have Dan introducing the resolution and Julie with the second. We'll vote again. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank WFS and Myron Muller for their donation to the egg program. Next one?
Next, in Appendix C, I will introduce the following resolution and move its adoption, whereas the Martin County Pork Producer Association donated two hundred dollars in pork certificates to each Fairmont Elementary and Fairmont High School to be used to provide meals to teachers during parent-teacher conferences, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept this gift.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Julie. So, I have Dan introducing the resolution and Julie with the second. We'll vote again. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we thank Martin County Pork Producers for their donation.
And finally, in Appendix D, I will introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, whereas the Fairmont Area Football Association donated football equipment during the year 2015 totaling fourteen thousand four hundred seven dollars and ninety-four cents, be it resolved by the Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Thank you, Dan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I have Dan introducing the resolution and Nicole with the second. We vote again. Danielle?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Rufus?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, and we, that's a lot of money that the association donated for football equipment, and we really thank them for that, so...
This was thirty new helmets, twenty sets of shoulder pads, two new tackling machines, and new pads for blocking sleds.
Very cool. Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda are the financial reports and bills, and Sue Nelson is here to talk about that.
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the wire transfers from January eighth to January twenty-first, and the payment of the January twenty-sixth bill. So, just tonight, Judy would have given you the wires and transfers from January eighth through the twenty-first. What we have here is paying our health insurance for January. We have our RevTrack fees from the prior month's transactions, our sales tax that we needed to pay for the prior quarter's transactions. We received our Pathways to Early Learning Scholarship money in from the prior month, and then our revenue share, and that's when we pay any of our payments through Commerce Bank. Each month, we receive some dollars back. Any questions on the wires? Okay, then you also had a check register in your packet. I just have a couple to bring to your attention. There's a payment through Commerce Bank to UHL Company, so there's not a check number. This is for a temperature control preventative maintenance contract that we have. And this is something that Dave Turnberg takes care of, and there are monthly checks on our, the technology that we use to make sure all of those things are, all of the automation is working correctly for our heating and cooling, cooling systems. And then, check number fifty-eight zero zero seven made payable to Construction Specialties. This is for annual bleacher inspection. This is for our indoor bleachers, and this is for really the operation of those indoor bleachers. So, annually, this company will go through and tighten any nuts or bolts. They'll check out the electrical motors. They'll make sure the operation and the sequencing is, is correct for putting the bleachers in and out. And then, check number fifty-eight zero ten made up to Dakin Applied. This is for our annual boiler tune-up. This is for the boilers at both sites. And this is really to go through annually and make sure that the boilers are working as efficiently as possible. Those are the only ones that I was going to highlight. Any questions? And Julie and I did review the bills and the wires prior to the meeting.
If there are no questions for Sue on those, I would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for January eighth, 2016, to January twenty-first, 2016, and payment of the January twenty-sixth, 2016 bill.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. So, I have a motion by Julie, a second by Nicole, to approve the wire transfers and payment of the January 2016 bills. Any further discussion or questions for Sue or Julie? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Okay, old business. We have nothing listed. Is anyone aware of any? Okay, then we'll move to new business. We have Architectural Design Services, Dan?
As said, an operations committee meeting here earlier this month, we reviewed a proposed... As said, an Operations Committee meeting here earlier this month, we reviewed a proposal by the INS Group to study and provide architectural designs to modify the main entrance and office area at the junior senior high school building. The purpose of this study is to review and make recommendations to improve traffic flow, provide timely customer service, and increase the functionality of the main entrance and office at the high school. The cost of this study is $4,350 and the Operations Committee recommended approval of this proposal from the INS Group. I'll make a motion to, what would be the correct wording here? I'll make a motion to approve the contract with INS Group to provide those designs at the cost of $4,350.
Thank you Diane, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Julie. So I have a motion by Dan, second by Julie, to approve contracting with INS Group to provide the Architectural Design Service for the main entrance and office area at the high school. Any further discussion or questions on that item?
Joe, do we have any idea what the timeframe is of when we might get our first look at those?
Well, they came down and took a look already and I would guess a couple of months, probably 60 days or so, 60, 90 days.
By the end of the, by the end of the school year though?
Yes.
So do they do interviews with people and ask them how it flows or do they watch when the kids are coming in or-
They're going to do both. They're looking, they're really zeroing in on the main entrance way and what to do about traffic coming into the building initially and, and how the office is set up. And you know, right now, the high school office is set up kind of like a main hallway. It's amazing how many hundreds of people go through that high school office. And I know the high school office has been designed and redesigned multiple times in the last three decades, but with different philosophies and how to provide better customer service that they'll be interviewing people and looking at, and also INS has designed a number of entrances to other school buildings throughout the state. And so they kind of know what works and they'll be able to show us some examples of that. So it should be an interesting study.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? If not, I still have the motion by Dan and second by Julie, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is a designation of a Minnesota State High School League representative, Rufus?
Minnesota State High School League requires districts to designate two representatives, one faculty and one school board member who are authorized to vote on behalf of the, of Fairmont Area Schools at a district, region, or section meeting and on mail ballots when member schools are called for, called on to vote. I'm recommending that Matt Mahoney, Activities Director, and Dan Brookins, Athletic Council Member be named our designated representatives. I therefore make a motion to select Matt and Dan as the, as our representatives. So that's the motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Nicole. So I have motion by Rufus, second by Nicole, to approve designating Matt Mahoney and Dan Brookins as the, our school district representatives to the Minnesota State High School League. Any further discussion on that? Do you know, do they meet quite often or quarterly or do you know too much about it?
For this particular thing, in the past, it's always been just the math that takes care of it. And if there are any things that do come up, I would be contacted by them by email or-
Oh, some, they do email voting and stuff that way? I don't know how they do it.
Matt's not still here to explain how he does it, but, but yeah, this, adding this school board representative to this is a new thing.
Okay. All right. Okay, well I have the motion by Rufus and second by Nicole, so all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a medical leave request Nicole?
Yep, Jane Pyman, Media Technician at the high school has requested a medical leave. I therefore move to approve the medical leave request for Jane Pyman beginning February 1st, 2016 through March 18th, 2016 or per medical recommendation.
Thanks Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Nicole, second by Rufus, to approve the medical leave request for Jane Pyman beginning on February 1st and extending through March 18th. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then we have an employment. Rufus?
Kim Ness has recommended that Loretta Muller be hired as long-term substitute media technician at the high school while Jane Pyman is on leave. Loretta has prior experience subbing in her offices and she also has served as a test proctor. I make a motion to approve the employment of Loretta Muller as long-term substitute media technician at salary of step one, beginning February 1, 2016 and extending through March 18, 2016.
Thank you Rufus, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Julie. So I have a motion by Rufus, second by Julie, to approve the employment of Loretta Muller as the long-term substitute media technician. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Then next on our agenda are the board committee reports and the CER Advisory Council Meeting was in January 14th. Danielle?
Yeah, it was held, well I guess, Thursday, January 14th. I was not able to attend, but I do have some, kind of the agenda and what some brief stuff Ronnie gave me. They gave us an overview packet of the CER, basically kind of talking about its purpose, the different services they offer to the community, really laying down the different jobs in the CER, what Ronnie does and Chris does and stuff like that. So very interesting and it's good information. And then they also gave a breakdown of this hour scheduled in the facilities over the last, oh, it was many years and going forward into 2016 and 17. And then they also gave the registration numbers for the different activities that CER offers, how many are in each different one, the sports and adult education and all that, so.
And so do they see trends or is that what it was kind of identifying? I don't know if you really know what they were.
I think it's just kind of a, so you can see, I suppose they look at it to see what programs, you know, are beneficial and, yeah.
I just want to add something. I met with a couple of adults that relocated to Fairmont in the last two months and they were astonished at how open our school district is and how available it is to the public. And they were coming from one of the metropolitan suburbs and they were just stunned at how easy it is to request a classroom or request a gymnasium or request the Performing Arts Center. And they were just, it was just very complimentary. I just heard this yesterday afternoon and it was, I just have to share that publicly because not all schools are like ours. You know, we are just very open, we are very encouraged. We take, we acknowledge the fact that our public schools are paid for by tax dollars and the taxpayers have a right to use it. And it's amazing, it's amazing how many times I drive by the school late at night, both schools, and the parking lots are still full and there's the lights on and there's people inside. And so we get a great use out of our facilities, so. And I got to thank CER for that because CER does a great job. They work, they work their tails off for the community and I really appreciate that.
All right, anything else Danielle? All right, thank you. Then the MSBA conference was held on January 14th and 15th and Julie and Rufus and I attended that. I'll let you start Julie, talk if you want to share or-
Yeah, I can start. I'll just tell you a little bit about some of the breakout sessions I attended. I went to one, we are doing long-term facilities maintenance revenue. You've heard us talk about that as, as an operations committee and that. And that's something new that's been provided to us by legislation. And so one of the sessions I went to, just kind of to see where we are, what we're doing, and I didn't learn any new information. I feel that the information that we're using and doing, going forward with that is very similar throughout the state, but it was just reassuring to know that we're doing the right thing. So we're following everything that they said. I was kind of hoping that maybe there'd be information given on stuff maybe we could use to get more stuff, but no. I mean, if you want financing, they were selling financing too, but that wasn't what I was looking for. And then one of the other ones, Superintendent Brown and I both attended this one, but it was on the CTE programs, measuring of how the programs work and that. Just interesting and CTE includes fax, which would, my day would have been home ec, shop, things like that. It is now expanded to include bigger and more lifelong things for our students and that. And it was just, just really interesting to hear some of the numbers and that. And it's just part of it, how we're going to be working together to provide more of a well-rounded education for our students. I know one of the things that was brought up and maybe Superintendent Brown wants to go in a little bit more, but how hard it is, and we heard this last night, I'll speak on that with my Southern Plains Education Cooperative meeting too last night, but how some of these programs, it's hard to get certification within the state of Minnesota. You know, the state, we want to be going forward with education for our students and that, but if our state isn't able to provide that education to our teachers and staff who have to provide that to our students, it kind of puts us in a quandary to be able to provide everything for our students and that. And you know, that's what we're seeing with Southern Plains is that, you know, it's harder to find some of the more difficult certifications for special ed and that too. So we're seeing a shortage of special ed teachers and that. But that's kind of what was with that as well too, but that was a big point that I brought home with that is that, is the importance that we need to work with our legislators and our schools, our education, our higher levels of education to get these programs in place so we can provide the best for our students, so. And I think there was one other one that I went to, oh, I went to the school finance update, listened to Tom Melcher speak on that and I believe Diane was there. Superintendent Brown was there too. Just kind of went through the funding bills and things like that. It was quite a lengthy, what's it, an hour, I think, maybe even more than that.
A good 45 minutes.
Yeah, it's 56 slides, but 28 pages here, but it was just, it was good information though. I don't always go to that one and so it was, it was good information for me to hear what, what new things are happening. And I think the last one that I went for a breakout session was on Alice Training. And we have done similar training in our schools. It's armed intruder training and things like that. What, what I liked about this Alice Institute, do I have it? Yeah, I have it on here, is that there are programs that the, that staff can use to kind of aid the students in learning how to prepare for intruders. And it was, you know, the, what was brought up from the school district and I can't think, Wyndham I think was the school, yeah, Wyndham was a school district that implemented this. And like I said, our student, our class, our, our staff has already been through a different type of training. What I liked about this one is this Alice Training. There was training programs and booklets that were made for different levels of students so teachers could incorporate that into their classrooms. But I mean, it was pre-K, there were some. And I know some of the people that spoke on it was like, you know, that you'd think that, oh, you don't want to talk about that in front of these kids, but I mean, it arms the kids, it helps the kids. And one of the things I did like, I don't know, I'm sure if we do that in our school district, but what they were implementing in Wyndham is that at the beginning of the year, everybody brings a canned food item, whether it be a can of soup, can of beans, corn, whatever it would be, have that in the room and then should there be an intruder that came into the room, that is something that they could use then to distract the intruder as it came into the room. And at the end of the year, what's there is donated to the food shelf. And I just thought that was just really neat. But I just, but you know, you, it's that, you know, sure, there are intruders coming in, they're surprising you, but if, if you could pick something up, whether it be, you know, the shoe off your foot or book bag or something, that, that startles and it puts them off and scares them away too. So, and it's probably very similar to what, what you're taught in self-defense classes too to kind of, you know, how to help yourself. But I just thought it was really interesting and in Wyndham, the police officers, there was two of their staff members that are very involved in, and not that we have very good involvement with our police officers too, I don't mean to say that, but they came and they were part of the presenters of that program. I was just very impressed with that. So that's the three that I went to.
I was thinking it'd probably be a fun way to get rid of some vegetables at home. The kids didn't want, get rid of spinach, Brussels sprouts. That's a good idea though.
I mean, it was just, just very interesting and I just thought that was something that we could implement very easily in, in the classrooms. And like I said, you know, what's a can of vegetables, you know, 50 cents, but then at the end of the year, it's donated, next year you do again, so it's a guaranteed.
Right.
So, yeah.
All right Rufus, want to have a report?
Yeah, I enjoy going to the conference to find out, you know, what's happening on the national scene, what, you know, what other districts are challenged with. There was a dynamite speech keynote addressed by a professor from Oregon, Yang Zhao, who spoke about the challenges, you know, facing education around the world. And, and part of that is, you know, a transformation from what he described as, you know, training, training students for a workforce of the past, as opposed to training, training our students for the workforce that they will be encountering. He gave statistics, there was someone startling that, you know, that, you know, some studies have shown that 50% of, of recent college graduates are either unemployed or underemployed. And, and so, I mean, there's a, we have a tremendous challenge ahead of us trying to figure out, you know, how we transform education, you know, to meet that, you know, that new future in the, in the workforce. And, and part of it is, you know, transforming the organization, transforming, you know, how we teach, what we teach. And so it was kind of a wake-up call. And, and I went to a, a work session, a school district, St. Michael Albertville. Their recent, they recently became Q Comp. And, and it was interesting to hear their, their experience. They have recently gone to the full-time coaching model in their, in their Q Comp program because, you know, as I say, you know, part of the challenge, you know, to meet this, this, you know, this new environment, this new digital environment which is transforming the world and transforming the workforce, is to, is to change how we, you know, what we teach and how we teach. And so, you know, every, it's kind of the same message that I heard last year. And, and, you know, people are still, you know, trying to figure out how to do this, how to, you know, how to make the change.
It was very interesting, wasn't it? Yeah. I too liked Yang Zhao. He made us sing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. So all of the school board members there, I don't know how many there, thousand?
Couple thousand.
Couple thousand? So we're all singing Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer and then he tells us to quit, but then he pointed out that Rudolph, when he would, his nose didn't pass the state standards because it wasn't black. So that just makes you think of things in a different way because not everybody is created the same, not everyone has the same talents, you know? And so it just made you open your eyes from the get-go to what he was going to talk about, which was more creativity and being an entrepreneur and not being a factory worker and a machinist, but to look at things differently. Because he used Kim Kardashian as an example, so if anybody knows what her job is, he would like to know. And think about that.
I don't think you can say that here.
So, right. She makes a lot of money doing, and that's his question. She has marketed herself, she's an entrepreneur, she has come up with a way to make a lot of money.
And, and I think his point was that we can't predict what an individual talent, you know, how valuable an individual talent, you know, will be. And so if we, if we pigeonhole everybody and we standardize everything, we're losing a lot of opportunity and we're losing a lot of talent. And so, you know, creativity and, you know, you know, problem solving, entrepreneurship, I mean, those are the, you know, the key words.
How many times, you know, do you lose a business in a town or something where somebody becomes, you know, unemployed and that? But then the things that come from that person, you know, yeah, they, they use their creativity, they use that, you know, to develop or to, to find something else to, as an outlet or an income for them. And so, yeah, it's, it was amazing to hear what he had to say. And you don't think about that until you listen to somebody like that and it was very good.
Talked a lot about human potential. And we're not all born with the same, we're born, we're not born the same, we're born with human potential, so how do we unlock that? It was, I really enjoyed him, but I also enjoyed the other keynote speaker and creating a hero-friendly culture. He talked about the happily ever after cycle, so that was kind of fun to listen to too. So first it's new and exciting and then the new kind of wears off. He kind of used marriage as an example. And then there's denial and fear and anger and then blame. You just give up, you start looking again and the cycle continues. So there was, he was very good too, so I enjoyed both of those. And then, of course, I went to, um, uh, one of the breakouts on policy, so. It was very interesting to me, so I, I enjoyed that one. And then I also went to one on school climate, which, which was not so, it was pretty slow, it never really developed. I don't think the, what it was intended to, according to the thing, and an opening workshop thing I went to. So, it was very good. Superintendent Brown, you were also there?
I was, and, uh, once again, I enjoyed, first of all, I enjoyed the company of, uh, the board members, and it's, it's, it's nice sometimes to get out of town and be able to sit and talk for hours and, and, uh, you know, we, we went to these workshops on Thursday, and then we go out to have supper, and we spent quite a few hours just sitting and chatting and sharing what, uh, we had learned. And then, um, it was very inspirational. A couple of the breakout sessions that I went to, I focused on principals, uh, P A L S, principals. Uh, talked about the Minnesota Principals Academy. This is something that has started, uh, legislature funded this program, started in two thousand eight. And, um, they have two principal academies throughout the state, and they have funded this again, so that this next year, there'll be a principals academy in the metro area, and principals academy in greater Minnesota. And, uh, south, southwest and south-central Minnesota are the two regions that they're looking at. And, uh, they were looking for twenty-five principals that would be willing to invest twenty-eight days of training, ten days during the summertime, and eighteen days during the school, uh, day. But when I looked at the curriculum and, uh, heard a report of what these different principals are learning, it's just incredible. And so, um, hopefully we'll get this in our region, or at least in the southwest and Marshall. And if so, I'm going to strongly encourage at least two of our, uh, principals to attend this, uh, next year. And, uh, the, the state will pay for part of this, we would have to pay for part of it. But it's very reasonable, and it's just superb training for our principals. And we know, research shows that, uh, academic achievement really relies on having great building leadership at the schools. And, uh, we have a good group of principals, but we could always use some additional training. And one of the schools that, uh, was presenting here, they sent all of their administrative team to this training, the superintendent, the business manager, and, uh, uh, you know, some key people in the office, uh, also went along with their principals. We talked about the, uh, C T E program that we went to, Julie and I went to that. And, um, that was the one that, uh, I try to be quiet when I go to these conferences, believe it or not, I try to be very, I try to sit and listen and learn, but this one here kinda got me going at the end. And I, I gave the observation that I said, you know, sometimes, I used, when I grew up in Clinton, Iowa, I grew up right next to a railroad track, and a couple times in my young youth, there were train accidents. And what I, what I observed about a train accident is that when a train goes off the track, it decouples. The, you know, the cars aren't connected anymore. And it just drove me crazy to look at these folks from the, uh, and it wasn't just their fault, but you have the Minnesota Department of Ed that says, you know, we have the world's best workforce. We want all of our students to be career and college-ready, career and college-ready. And then the business community, the Chamber of Commerce in Minnesota is demanding, they're seeking out skilled workers to go from high school right into the workforce. We want skilled workers. And, um, everybody knows what we need to do, but the trains are off the track. It, it, nothing's connected. And so I raised my hand, I said, "How many public colleges and universities offer the work-based training curriculum so that teachers can get their certification?" None, none. Minskew doesn't have one program anymore, they're all gone. Uh, there's one private college that has a program, but, uh, to, to think that our teachers are going to go to a private college to get the certification, and yet to have work-based learning, you need the certification. And so I'm in the process of drafting a letter to Dr. Rosenstone from Minskew, Commissioner Caselli is from M D E, Governor Dayton with the governor's office, and, and just ask if the three of them would just get together over supper, and maybe over a two-hour timeframe, work this out, because they've been talking about this for years. And it's time that, if Minnesota is gonna compete to, with other states in the nation and other parts of the world, we need to figure this out.
So, work-based education, more specifically, what does that refer to?
It'd be like, uh, internships. It'd be, uh, for example, we have one student right now, uh, that leaves high school for two hours a day and goes out and works at Kaler Automation. And, um, and he's doing that as an independent study. But, uh, years ago, I understand that we were a regional center for vocational programs, and we had play, we had, we had in our school, uh, times when students could leave the school and go out into internships, and actually have a work-based, uh, you know, um, experiential education experience, actually get paid for that.
So, if a teacher has a certification, what do they add to that experience?
They can supervise that. Otherwise, you can't allow students to do that, and if you do allow them to leave, then you don't get paid, you don't get state aid for them.
You have to be able to go out to the work, to the job site, evaluate. You know, part of it is, um, Southern Plains has, um, Matt Nielsen, serving right now in that role, and he's serving it as a community expert.
Right.
And, um, he goes, he, he goes, meets with the students, he helps them prepare a resume, he helps with job applications, kind of helps them to find a job, kinda see what they're even interested in, then he, you know, works with them to find a job to go to and that. But then he spends his time then going to these places, you know, supervising, not necessarily every student every day, but he goes and checks on them, and, you know, he's got his, you know, work he's gotta do to support that. But these students then are learning something on the job then, so it's, uh, it's really interesting. He did speak at our, uh, last meeting.
A month ago.
A month ago.
So, what would be the difference then between what you described Matt doing, and what our counselors do right now, and what, what you're talking about?
Well, they're actually, they're physically going out into the workforce. For example, uh, if a student's out at Kaler Automation for a couple of hours a day, this individual would physically go out, meet with the Kaler Automation people, talk to their supervisor, um, to actually, it's almost like you're supervising the experience. Uh, we don't want students just going out and working, um, without any supervision, without any connection. We, we want them to have a valuable experience. And, um, and interestingly enough, we have a lot of those pieces coming up, because all the students are now creating their portfolios through the Minnesota Career Information System we have at the high school. And so we have a lot of this, we have our kids ready to go, and we have a very strong vocational program. Our vocational wing at the high school, with our Family and Consumer Science, our Welding Academy, our automotion, automation, automotive, thank you, our Mechatronics, our, uh, woodshop area, Ag Academy, Welding Academy. We have a very strong vocational program, and to maybe, now to go out and extend that so that kids can get out of the classroom and into actual, real-life experiences, maybe come into Perkins. You know, but, but doing something that they can really learn, you know, real-life experience.
They learn that, and then, then the self-worth and that, that they gain from it also, from, from going out, completing an application, completing that, you know, interview to, you know, just do that. And then how that helps support their selves as a, as a, you know, individual, giving them confidence in that too, to, you know, go out. Maybe it's in high school, yeah, they did go work at Perkins, or they went and did something. But then those are, are skills in that they learn then later on in life to apply to a job, you know, somewhere else.
So, if a student were interested in pursuing something like this, how would they proceed?
That's, that's the kicker. Right now, unless we assign a teacher to be a quote-unquote "community expert", which is simply a, a way around the requirements of the state for three years, you can get a community expert's license. It's like a variance. Uh, but, um, we need to work this out as a state. I'm, I'm really interested in, and, and I think we're poised to do that. Uh, we're, I've invited the Lieutenant Governor, Tina Smith, to come down to our high school and take a look at what we are doing. Uh, I think we're one of the best-kept secrets of Minnesota. I think some of the thing, good things that we're doing as a school district, I just think that if we showed the political leaders in St. Paul and our congressional delegation what we're doing, uh, we could move this along. I'm, I'm convinced this can get worked out before next school year.
Because really, it protects kids, it, the kids who are going out and the employers, that it's a two, it's, you need somebody that can be the go-
But sometimes it just takes us to make them aware. You know, do they think there's enough people out there? I mean, I don't know, but, you know, just creating this awareness that there, this need is there. I mean, that's, that's what we're doing, so.
And just a couple of other points, so I did go to a breakout session, uh, from Dave Adney. Um, he's the Executive Director of the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals. He used to be the former principal at Minnetoka, and you always try to get a nugget out of each of these, you know, breakout sessions. And the nugget I came away with, I came away with two nuggets, actually. One was, um, when he was at Minnetoka, they put together a varsity letter for community service. And he pointed out that in Minnetoka, there's a lot of things for kids to do, it's a big high school, there's three thousand students in Minnetoka High School, and yet not everybody's involved in band or choir or a sports program. And, uh, so they implemented a varsity letter that a student can earn by going out and doing community service, either working with churches or different community groups, girl scouts, boy scouts, uh, working in a nursing home, lots of things you can do. And, uh, so he sent me all the documentation for that. I have forwarded that to our counselors and to our administration at the high school to look at, uh, for future consideration. But he pointed out, Dave pointed out, that about twenty percent of the students at Minnetoka High School earn a varsity letter in community service. He says, "And these are kids that would never earn a varsity letter in anything else." Uh, but, uh, this is just a great program, and it really encourages kids to give back to the community. The other thing he talked about, I've never heard of this before, but he gave, he talked about Rogers Adoption Change. And in the handout I gave the board, there is a two-page, uh, uh, analysis of, uh, what's called the Diffusion of Innovation Theory, and it's otherwise known as the Rogers, uh, Theory. He, uh, implemented this in nineteen sixty-two. And if you look at the very back of this page, there's a, there's a chart, uh, that shows that when you try to do change, that, um, there are basically five different types of people. There are the innovators, the early adopters, the early majority, the late majority, and the laggards. You know, change is hard. You know, that's what, you know, we're going through a political election right now, going through community changes, going through some educational change, change is hard. A lot of folks want change, but they know it's hard.
Change is constant, change doesn't change.
Change is constant. And so this theory is kind of a neat thing to read about, and about the five different groups, and how you can work with each group to get change. So, that was a, that was a real neat thing. And then finally, you know, Dr. Melcher, he's one of my favorite people, um, from the Minnesota Department of Ed, one of the few people in Minnesota that fully understands, uh, frontwards and backwards of Minnesota school funding formula. I mean, he's really knowledgeable. But he gave some trends that I thought were interesting to report tonight. He compared between two thousand three and two thousand sixteen, so the last fourteen years. Uh, the free reduced lunch, uh, population in Minnesota has gone from twenty-seven point four percent to thirty-seven point nine percent. The minority students in our school districts in Minnesota, eighteen point nine percent, now it's thirty point three percent. One-third of our children are children of color. Our special education students, really not much of a big change there, thirteen point two percent, now it's fifteen point one percent. And our English-language learners, otherwise known as, you know, we used to call them E S L, uh, students that are not speaking English as their major language, uh, six point one percent, and now it's eight point three percent. The punchline is, is that Minnesota is becoming more racially diverse, and, uh, we see our poverty rate increasing. And, and most of these children are in our public schools. And so public schools, it's amazing to me, and I, when I come away from these conferences, I'm always pumped. I'm excited about what we do as a school, I'm excited about our challenges, but I'm really excited about the good work that we do. And it's amazing what we do, um, when we look at the fact that we have a changing population, but that's why we need to change. And so I'm pumped, and I'm looking forward to the second semester, and I'll be quiet.
And really, what our job is to do is to break the cycle that we see in, in some of the families and homes and stuff. Um, Dr. Zhao, it, one of his was, "It's not education for life, it's education is life." And I thought that just means so much, because without education, where do you go? Or what do you do? Anything else on M S B A conference? All right, Southern Plains Board Meeting, Julie?
Yes, we met last night. Um, just some things, that was election of officers is what usually is the, um, um, uh, routine for the beginning of the, the year, the, um, calendar year. Had some resignations, um, retirements and that. We hired new positions, people that are moving from buildings. We had, um, students that moved within, um, from like the elementary school to the, uh, Winnebago, um, building, and so the pair professionals from our district did follow in that, and that kinda followed in some other districts as well. A personnel work agreement, um, we increased, um, Jane Katava is the district or the Southern Plains school nurse, a little, uh, wage increase for her. Um, also, that comes around every year about the same time, the year's resolution to reduce program staff, just kinda the normal thing, business that we have to do to, in case we need to cut budgets and that. An instructional sharing agreement with Blue Earth for a pair professional to move back and forth. Uh, we, um, decided to go with Higher Image LLC as a, um, avenue to do our background checks and that. We also approved a do, a donation from a family member of, of one of our students within our program. Purchase Practical Assessment Exploration System, uh, that's, is a, um, way to kinda you teach some skills within the, the program, through the Southern Plains program, to help them, um, learn just everyday skills, cooking, um, some simple, you know, construction, things like that. Um, and that program then, that's thirty thousand dollars, right, there'd be an upkeep probably every, every year of just materials that'll be used and that, that will also be, um, and then, once that is all set up, then that'll be open, once they get the program set up and that, that it may be able to be used within the, um, partnership, uh, districts as well. And then a grant application to kinda help with that funding. Our next meeting will be Monday, March twenty-eighth, and at that time, we had planned to kinda do this last meeting in Winnebago, didn't work out, so our next meeting, we're hoping to get into Winnebago. All the, um, board members then will be able to tour the facility in Winnebago and, and, um, just kinda see how things are working. We'll meet in the evening, so won't be with students in, in place, but we'll see what the, um, how the, you know, building is set up and that. So, other than that, that was it, so.
All right, any questions for Julie on Southern Plains? All right, anything else that needs to come to the board? Well, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Dan Zer, second?
Second.
Thank you, Nicole. A motion by Dan, second by Nicole, to approve adjourning the school board meeting at six oh four P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, thank you, everyone.